All right, good afternoon, everyone. Today is Wednesday, July 5, 2017, 12 o'clock noon, so we shall begin our council meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Randy Funker.
Here.
Brad Henn.
Here.
Greg Gills.
Here.
Zach Sawyer.
Wonderful, thank you. First on the agenda, public comments. Are there any public comments? There are none. So we will move on to the consent agenda. And I wanted to go over a couple of appointments. There are renewals for the appointments for some of our boards and commissions. I don't have that list with me, Ange.
I didn't.
That's okay.
Because on there was the people that said no.
Right. We will have some openings. I will be sure to share those with media as soon as possible. As you all are aware, unfortunately Fred Stratman passed away this past week, but before that, he did ask to be removed just because his health was poor. But we will have some openings on trails. We will have openings on the airport commission, planning and zoning.
Park.
And park. So if there is interest in those areas, council, if you know of anyone that you would like to recommend, or if you have heard from anyone that is interested, please let me know and I'll touch base with them so we can get those vacancies filled. Any questions then on the consent agenda? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Last request for any questions or comments. If we have none, may I have a roll call, please?
Henn.
Hi.
Funker.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Gills.
Hi.
Thank you, everybody. Going into new business, discussion of the rehabilitation options on 16th Street. Todd, thanks for coming in today on your vacation. We appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem. It's all part of it, right?
Right.
You all should have had a handout in your packet, I assume. Essentially, the reason we're bringing this back to you is, as you know, we approved dollars for full reconstruction, but some time ago, you guys approved $2,000 for CTS to do some core sampling on 16th Street. When we, when you approved that, I was assuming that the core samples were going to prove my point that the subgrade was in very poor condition and that we needed to do full removal. I guess the good thing is, is we actually took the time to do it and, and the core samples came back much better than I anticipated. So the, the concrete itself is in very good condition, and for the most part, the subgrade is stable and sturdy. It, it appears like it settled over the years, maybe on the sewer ditch that was put in in the seventies, which took some crown out of the road. So you normally have crown like this, and now we're either flat or in some places inverted, which is causing some moisture issues. And then we also have some moisture issues because there's not good drainage on the south side of the road. Anyways, finding that the, the subgrade was in better condition than we anticipated, we started running up the flagpole, what would be some different options for rehabilitation besides full removal? And what we've come up with as an option is to still remove the areas that are very bad. Give you an example, in front of Rod Merly's house, there's that section there. That's too far gone. There's no, no rehabilitating that. But what we would do in, in our proposal there is remove that and put in full depth, super depth asphalt. And then, over the rest of the road, and that included, they have a, I hate to say it's a newer product, it's been out for a few years, it's not something that we have utilized here in Sheldon, but it's something that Sioux County and O'Brien County have done. I actually have, have seen it done and have rode, some of the roads that that's been used on, and it appears to have decent success. But it's a, it's essentially a high-density, high-polymer inner layer of asphalt. So it's just one inch thick. It's an expensive one-inch, but it's, it's very durable, it's very flexible. And what that'll hopefully do is allow us to get, get our crown back and also give a flexible layer in there to stop reflective cracking coming back through, then the new asphalt, we would propose to put on top of that. We would put three inches of new asphalt on top of that. The downside, the bigger downside, is that brings your road profile up four inches, which means your shoulders got to come up four inches, which means your driveway's got to come up four inches. Some driveways, that's not a real issue. Other driveways that are pretty flat, that's going to take some creative thinking to get things, we might have to, you know, double soap the driveway and then put an area drain in or something to take care of their water issue. What I'm, I guess I look at it this way, we can still do the other project, we have approved dollars from MAP 21 to do full reconstruction. Or we can look at the repair method. There's pros and cons to both. I've kind of laid out some of them for both of you. Wanting to know what the council's thoughts are on which way you would maybe like us to proceed before we get too far into engineering. If you have questions about what I typed up, I can certainly answer them, or I can lend some more opinions.
The right-of-way, you have estimated that purchases at 70,000.
Correct.
Does that include, like, I mean, if we're talking, because the other portion of this, a part of this is the rec trails, is, is possible linking in of the rec trails.
The rec trails has approached me and said, yeah, they think it'd be great if we go purchase right-of-way, because that would give them a spot to go then.
Is that calculated into that?
No, that's, that 70,000 is enough right-of-way to do our road. So the kicker there is, because we have federal funds in this job, if we do a full reconstruct, we have to meet all the standards, which means we would need to regrade that ditch, we would need to change the slopes. It's likely that the Mid-American pole line would have to be moved over. We may get an exception on that, heavy on May. It's also likely all the trees on the south side of the road would likely have to be taken out because they would be within the DOT's clear zone. So you'd be taking all those out as well. So the right-of-way would actually be on the north side, and it's enough right-of-way to extend the ditch slopes to what we need. That would not include enough right-of-way for a trail. And also, the, the right-of-way acquisition cost, that 70,000 estimated, is not, you cannot use the MAP 21 funds towards that purchase. So that would be above and beyond what we already have budgeted, and it would be all our dollars.
Okay. And so, those items you were mentioning, the moving of the poles, the cutting down of the trees, et cetera, is that figured in in the estimate of 770,000, or is that over and above?
So the tree removal is not. The pole moving would actually not be our cost. That would actually be Mid-American Energy's cost. They are in our right-of-way, not in a private easement. Therefore, if, if we do something, it would be, they would bear the cost of that. It's a large number.
And who rules on that? Who decides if there can be an exemption or not?
It's, it's my understanding, we would have to go through likely the state, the DOT.
DOT, okay.
Yeah. And that's what I think, and I could be wrong there, and I'd have to follow up on that. There is, Justin Christensen with DGR has been helping me with this. I mean, we, we would, if we go the full reconstructions route, he said there is a opportunity to apply, apply for an exception, but he doesn't want to lend an opinion on whether or not we would get it.
That's fair.
Are you aware of any possible federal money for alternate transportation or whatever that would help us do that increased right-of-way for trail?
I'm not, I have not looked into that, Pete.
I just, I wonder if there's not something out there. You keep hearing about alternate transportation funds.
There, it's possible. I'm not aware of any right now. You know, the reconstruct saves us $291,000 on the proposed project limits, which is from Island to about 200 feet east of South 8th. If, if that's the method we end up selecting, we could save the 291, or we could also go back to the technical committee, it's the nine-county group that divvies up that funding, and ask if we could extend our project limits and still get the full amount of money. We did that on the Country Club Road, East 9th project. That was initially only going to be a Country Club Road project, and the group agreed to allow us to extend the project limits. So we ended up essentially expending the same amount of dollars, but did a lot more footage of road. I would maybe think, since it's already a budgeted amount, if you selected that method, that we would, if, if you wanted us to, we would ask that question again. They may tell us no, they may say, yeah, go ahead, but it would be worthy of asking if we select that route. It's a big number. The, the savings is a big number. Now, if you overlay it, you're going to need to mill and fill it in probably 15 or 20 years, like we do the majority of our streets. But you'll be able to do that a couple of times. So if you did it once to get to the, compare 40 years to 40 years, you're still, you're still over 100,000 in savings.
And then...
And you end up with a new surface when you do it.
So with all the, the traffic, the heavy semis...
Actually, 200 in savings, sorry.
An overlay would be all right for that? I mean, that's what the testing showed, that if we do that, it would be...
So, so, yeah, Justin feels confident that with, with, with the base we have, if we improve some drainage, there is not, the, the approved drainage cost is not in either one of these estimates, because I just had him quick-run these for comparison's sake, and it's the same on both of them. So it's, it's already apples to apples.
The what cost, did you say?
Drainage.
Drainage, okay.
Yeah. We would love to run lateral drainage, or parallel drainage along both sides of the road. May not be able to do that. There's high-pressure gas mains on both sides of the road in the shoulder. We've had conversations with Mid-A. We can maybe get it on one side. They, they may consider abandoning one of the lines and moving it all over to the other one. Discussions we'll have to have, or we'll just run some laterals with surface drains. Either way, we got to take road out, so there'll be spots to put those in.
I'm confused in your, you said made the comment, you could do it twice and still come out ahead with the overlay.
Yeah.
The concrete cost estimate is 770,000.
Correct.
And we're looking at 479 for the rehab?
Yeah, but the, the overlay would likely just be a mill and fill of about two inches. If you look here, just the, the three-inch overlay portion, it'd be number three on the, on the one option that says three-inch overlay, 950 ton.
Which page are you looking at there? Last one?
I don't have my computer up here.
The first one right under is notes.
Yeah.
That's, so, we'll go down one more, can't keep going. So right there.
Okay.
950 ton of three-inch overlays, $90,000. Now, the difference would be, if we did a, if we did it, we would likely only do the top two inches, or maybe three, you'd have some milling on top of there, but you're still in the ballpark of 100 grand.
Okay.
So if you did a, at 20 years, if you did 100 grands worth, $100,000 worth of repairs, you're, you're still at...
Okay.
579 versus 770. So you're at 191.
That makes more sense. What I was looking at initially, I'm looking at a 20-year life expectancy on the rehab in 20-year life, and doubling that 479,000, that's significantly more than the 770.
So the one thing, the one thing that I've asked the engineer, and I can't answer for you today, but I did, I'll give you the best attempt I can. I asked him if we could just mill off the top and put two inches back on. His opinion is, yes, he thinks that is likely. There has not, there's no inner layer that's been out there for 20 years. So there's no, at least not in Iowa that he's aware of. So there's no inner layer road out there that somebody has run 20 years, milled off the top and put back on. We assume it's...
Leaving the inner layer in place.
Correct. Because if we have to replace the inner layer, then we've got more costs again, because now you've got more asphalt, and that, that one-inch layer is, I think, one and a half times the cost of a normal inch.
Is there any cha, well, this thing scares me, because that road has been terrible since I moved here, but the manholes aren't in the middle of that street, they're in strange places, but, and with realignment, or with completely replacement, would that give us an opportunity to put the road where it should be, or something? Some of those manholes are right in the line of tire traffic.
Sure, but that doesn't really cause an issue until the road moves, and the road moves because of the drainage. And, and if we purchased right-of-way, we would likely purchase right-of-way to the north, and if, so that would allow us to move the road to the north, which is the wrong way of going of what you're thinking.
Okay.
Because the manholes are towards the, the, the south traveled portion anyway. So to put them in the center, to your thinking, you'd have to move the road to the south.
Right.
Which means we'd be buying front yards.
Okay.
And then, you also got to remember, your alignment kind of is what it is now, too, because you've got all the utilities on both sides of it. You've got gas mains, you've got fiber optics, you've got water mains. So realignment today would be, would be tough, Pete.
Okay.
So really, we should be spending more money on drainage to get rid of the water so we don't have the movement of the road.
Correct. Well, it's one thing we did find in the core samples, is that there is a fair amount of the subgrade, at least in spots, was, was solid, but yet it was wet. But if you think about it, in the spots where the road is inverted and not crowned, the water has no place to go but down, and in some of the other areas where the road is just so shot, you can't seal those cracks up and keep the moisture out. So either option will, will help with that.
Was the soil consistency the same in all the...
Pretty good. Pretty good. Yep.
I'm surprised.
I'm, I was shocked when, when we got the results. I thought all I was doing is, is asking you guys to spend a couple thousand dollars to confirm that it was bad, and we could say we did our due diligence and we confirmed. When the, when the results come back, I was shocked, and so was the engineer, so...
Okay, if we use the reconstruction scenario, does that eliminate MAP 21 funds?
It does not.
Okay.
We can still use those funds and possibly extend...
We'd have to ask the question.
Right, okay.
When you say reconstruction, you're talking, what, he labels rehabilitation?
Right.
Resurfacing.
Overlay.
Yep.
Yes. Okay. Sure.
Yeah, both, both of the cost estimates say reconstruction, but one says rehab and one says full reconstruction. The full reconstruction is kind of...
And that's where I wanted to clarify, that he... I was, I was talking on overlay, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought, when I came in here, do it right, well, the first time, but then it was really the second time we're doing it, because it didn't get done right the first time supposedly. But now, when I hear this, and what you're talking about, now it seems to make more sense to pursue that rehab, the overlay.
I would tend to agree, especially if we can get more footage of road done and, and anticipate a useful life.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I'm basing some of that on, on some of the county's experiences with the inner layer. You know, I understand it's not something we've used, but it's not something that nobody's using.
But it has been out there long enough to prove itself?
I went, uh, let's see, the blacktop going east out of Ritter, over towards the Gettings Gardens, you know, on the north side of the gun club and whatnot there. That road, myself and street superintendent Dave Embest, oh, maybe five years ago, went up there and watched them lay this inner layer. That was one of the early pilot projects, was, I think it's the first one in O'Brien County. I just rode down that road this weekend. That thing is smooth. It's nice. So it's five years, I understand it's only five years, but it's, it's working there. And they did it for similar reasons of what we're considering here. We, we don't feel like, you know, on Country Club Road and East 9th Street, we did Kraken Seat. We don't feel like that has got as many advantages to this project. Well, we also would be a little concerned about doing a Kraken Seat on, with, with the gas mains where they are. Certainly don't want to break a gas main by pounding this big old heavyweight on the road.
Mm-hmm.
But even then, we don't think the road would, would last as well. We think we'd have more reflective cracking that would come back through. There's a full rubbleization option. Again, we looked at it, we don't think it's as functional. We feel like if we're going to do a reconstruct, that the inner layer is our, our, our best option.
The only downside then, that we haven't addressed or won't be covered, is rec trails, that link. And that's really a separate issue, but it isn't.
It, it is, but...
It's going to be costly.
I'm, I'm all for trails, but I don't know if it's worth spending an extra couple $300,000.
Yeah.
No, it's already 291 difference. Now you got to buy right-of-way. Now you got to deal with trees, so I mean, 291 turns into...
500,000.
Four, 500,000, potentially.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, unless you could find some program.
Right, but, but understand, our MAP 21 dollars are currently slated for federal fiscal '18, which starts October of '17.
Right.
Which is why we're trying to get it designed now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And actually, when we initially got these funds, it was for federal 20.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but then there were some projects that pulled out, and they said, hey, Sheldon, do you want your money sooner? And we said, well, sure.
Yeah.
Uh, because we got roads that need work, so we took the money sooner. We took it two years sooner, or got it two years sooner than what we initially anticipated when we applied for the funds.
I guess go and see how far they'll let us go and...
Yeah.
See if we can do more of it this way.
Using those funds, see if we can extend the project.
So, are, are you, yeah. Does that mean you're agreeing? What if they say no? You still want to do the rehab on the section, correct?
Do you want to do, so if we're saying, if we can do the rehab and get the extension, but do we, well, let's say we can't get the extension, we, do we still want to do the rehab? Is that kind of where we're at?
Well, that's what I, yeah.
Yes, right?
I mean, Brad said, go ask, and we will.
Right.
But if they say no, does that mean you don't want to save the 291 on the, on the rehab?
If it's comparable, I would recommend the rehab. You know, the longevity of the street? If we're going to save money in the long run, still have a 40-year...
The extension you're talking about, would that, I mean, is that going to exceed the 770,000, doing more with a cheaper method?
Justin hasn't had time to run full numbers on it. We, we think there's a chance we could get all the way to Washington.
Would that...
Which, if you remember, the first time we applied for MAP 21 funds, we applied all the way to Washington.
Right.
And we got, we got denied.
Okay.
So we went back, we came up with a new plan. Essentially, we were taking too big of a chunk of, of the, of the pie, you know, available money out. So we went back and we reapplied for, from Island to 200 feet of South 8th, and then we received the money.
I'm in favor of the rehab.
The MAP 21 is 60%.
Yeah, okay, and the...
It's, it's 60% grant here we're talking about, so...
Say no, then do the...
It's pretty considerable.
We are not at risk of losing that by asking for a bigger piece of the pie.
No, because the, the dollars are allocated to us.
It's the same piece of the pie.
But could they say, well, no, you're only going to do 479,000, so we're going to reduce yours and, and channel that 200,000...
They could choose, they could say, yeah, we're taking that money back if you're only doing the 479.
Mm-hmm.
But then remember, we're still getting 60% funding on that chunk.
Right, yep.
It's just, we would, we would lose the extra, lose is maybe a bad word, we would not receive the full amount of funding that we were allocated because we came up with a cheaper way to do our project.
Right.
I, I've seen that over there. I've seen it where somebody says, hey, our project came in, $100,000 less, 60 of that is MAP 21, here's your 60 back. I've also seen cases like us on Country Club Road, where we went back in and said, hey, group, this is, this is where we're at, this is what we'd like to do. And they said, well, that money was already yours, go ahead.
Nice.
But, but you have to go back. I mean, you can't just...
Yeah.
Change the project without, without talking to the group.
Okay.
I'm in favor of asking permission, see if we can't use those funds and, for the rehab.
I would.
And that's, that's good, but I really need to know today.
Yep.
Does that mean it's all rehab, even if they say no? Because time-wise, if we're doing full reconstruct, that's the reason I'm here today and didn't hold off two weeks. Time-wise, if we're doing full reconstruct with, with some of the right-of-way acquisition and applying for the exception and all that stuff that needs done, to get the thing out to bid this winter, we, we start to get tight. I mean, it's possible. It's, it's, it's still doable, but I don't want to, I don't want to come back in two weeks or a month...
Sure.
Because I'm not even sure, Sean and I'll have to do some checking to find out when we can even get this in front of the group.
Okay.
I'm not sure when the next scheduled meeting is. They only meet, is it twice a year?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, spring and fall, I believe.
And we can't get an answer before that?
No. I don't think so. We can make some phone calls, but any way you look at it, the rehab still, in my opinion, achieves the same goal at a lesser cost.
Anybody willing to... That would be your recommendation, is the rehab?
I feel like the rehab is the best option.
Okay.
Based, based on the fact, if you can get to a 40-year road and a 40-year road, and you're still looking at 190 to 200,000 dollars less money.
And you're confident with big wagons and tractors going down that thing, huh?
I, I, I am, simply based on the fact that the, the subgrade showed that it was stable. The concrete that was there showed that it was stable, that, you know, it's in good condition, it's not crumbling. The areas where we would remove all the concrete because it's too far gone, we would put in a super-depth asphalt. There's history on that, it, it can be made to handle roads, you just got to go much, much thicker. I mean, you'd be talking, I don't know, eight to 12 inches probably of asphalt in those locations to handle the loads.
Well, and remember, the, the road base is what carries the weight. It, it's not the surface, it's not the concrete or the asphalt, it's the road base. That road base, with, with the coring, is showing that, that it's sufficient, that, that it's not compromised, so you're, you're still going to have that, that base, you're just using a different surface that you're able to, to revitalize 15 to 20 years down the road.
To answer your question, Brad, why would I do that instead of concrete? It's pretty simple. If you're doing, if you, if you bid this as an asphalt job, you're going to have an asphalt contractor. So now, if you have a bunch of concrete work in it, they're likely going to sub that out. I think that they're already going to be comparable in costs, and if they have to go into a sub, I think you're going to bring costs up, where the concrete would be more expensive, so...
And then getting rid of the moisture is going to get rid of that movement of that road?
Uh, we'll do the best we can. I mean...
Because I think that's probably the hardest thing, and that breaks that road up, is that, you know, it drops and moves and...
Yes and no. So there's areas, I agree with you, that it moves, and it's, but there's also areas, take, take on the west end, so not too far from Island, go east of Island, was there a manhole, a couple hundred feet east of there?
Yeah.
I've seen already where we've had to go put that much asphalt in that manhole because the road came up, but...
Six inches?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Then, then, but that, but that section of road all moves together. So then later, it all drops back down, and now we've got our six inches of asphalt sticking up, and we go shave it back off, but the road there is essentially all in pretty good shape. But other areas, further to the east, is where it doesn't all move as one, and that's where you get the...
Sure.
The, you know, the, the more cracking all over the place. But yes, drainage will help all of it. I mean, drainage is ideal for subgrade, ideal for roads. That's why we put double tile lines down both sides of every new street we put in now. And we still sometimes have issues. Our ground in town moves a lot. Street maintenance would be a whole lot easier if our ground would just stay still.
I'm trying to play catch-up here. I mean, we've been talking about this, the road base had to be replaced. That, that's been the, my mindset for six months, or however long we've been discussing this. And now, we've got less than six days, and I've got to say, yes, okay, I'm going to go along with it. I mean, the nagging question in my mind is, are we going to be kicking ourselves in the rear end 15 years from now, saying we should have done something with that road base?
Maybe. All, all you can, all you can trust right now, Greg, is, is what the engineer and what I'm telling you is, we believe it'll hold up.
If we made the wrong choice.
Could we be wrong, Greg? Sure.
And that's, I'm not so worried, I'm worried about my, what's I wrong in my vote, right? I'm not worried about you. I mean, I'm going to be dealing with it. And that's where-
We can only make those-
It seems to be the way to go.
Yeah, that, that $2,000 we spent to take them core samples, right now, is the best $2,000 we spent on this project. Because without doing that, we wouldn't even have this information in front of you. We'd have moved ahead on the full reconstruct, and we'd have been spending, I mean, the 770 and reconstruct, that's not the project total. The project total is over a million, you know, all said and done. We'd have been spending a million dollars. Now, we have an opportunity to spend 300,000 less than that, or still spend it, and maybe get more road done. I'm a big fan of getting more road done, as long as we feel like the road will hold up. Which is why we did what we did on the project of Country Club and East 9th, and, and which is why I'm recommending to you today that we do the rehab option, and we check in to see if we can extend the limits, as long as you guys are comfortable with the money you already budgeted. And if they say yes, we do more. If they say no, well, then we have some extra, we have some money left over.
Well, I'm all in favor of, and appreciative of the information that we found and the recommendation that you're making. We can only go with what we have, the information today in 15 years. If it's different, we'll know in 15 years. So, is, if there's no further discussion, questions, go ahead.
In terms of rehab, we're committed to the Iceland to 200 feet?
Past 8th Avenue.
We're committed to that regardless. That's your question, right? I mean, if that's all we can do with this, that's all we can, we're committed to that, and if we can do more?
We're going to ask if we can do more.
Project is just $291,000 cheaper than it used to be.
Yep.
Which 40, 40% of that would be realized savings on our end.
Is that something that requires a vote?
Yes, I would appreciate that. I think Todd would appreciate that, or general consensus or a vote would be nice.
I, I would like to know that everybody agrees with what we're doing, when we're talking about this kind of money.
That I will move, that we move forward with the overlay, the rehab, whatever you want to call it, the less expensive option. Move forward with that and proceed as if that's the way we're going to go.
With, as Todd said, asking if we can extend it with those additional funds.
And either Sean or myself will work on that, and then when we have an answer, we'll let you know.
Okay, there is a motion on the table. Is there a second?
I'll support that.
Thank you. Any further questions, discussions?
Just one thing.
Yep.
If, if we can go more, are you saying go more? Because there's no sense of Sean and I asking the question, if we can go further.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go more if we can.
Yeah, I'd, I'd either of that be the best key scenario.
I, I believe so, too. I think Sean agrees with that as well, based on our conversations, but, okay.
All right. Any other questions or discussions? You're clear on what the motion is in the second? Awesome. May I have a roll call, please?
Kent?
Aye.
Funker?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Hamel?
And Ty for coming in on your vacation. We appreciate it. Next on the agenda is the possibility of going into closed session to the, on the discussion of non-union employee benefits. Before we go into closed session, if there are comments that any employees would like to share, you're welcome to do that in closed session, but then we will ask you to leave afterwards. And if you want to share anything on your parts, you're welcome to stay also. So, okay. So, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved. Support.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please? Gills?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Funker?
Aye.
Thank you. Hi.
We are on pause.
All right, we are now on pause. We have now come out of closed session at 1:37 PM. At this time, no action. It will be taken on that line item number four. After that is comments. I just have a couple comments I'd like to share, and then I'll ask if you have any else. I just want to thank the village for a wonderful July 3rd celebration of our independence. I know they can't control the weather, but it's a beautiful celebration here in our city. I also want to remind the residents of Sheldon that today is July 5. With that being said, 10:00 PM is it for fireworks. There's no media here, but we've got it in case anybody watches. After that, no more fireworks are allowed to be lit off in the city of Sheldon until December sometime. Other than that, comments, anywhere. Comments to council? Sean? Greg? Do we have, yeah? Comments? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, support?
Thank you. Roll call, please. Gills?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Funker?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you. Let me know when it's ready, and I'll come in.
All righty.